Recording please. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council Joint Study Session Session with our Awesome Arts Commission. In compliance with state law, city council special and regular meetings will be held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this study session to order, and for roll call, we'll just go around the table, and we'll start with Ethan.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ethan Newton, Parks and Recreation Director.
Good evening, I'm Jonathan Sida, Parks Project Manager.
Hello, I'm Debbie Hartzog, City Council Member.
I'm Jessica Breeden, Art Commissioner.
Hi, everyone, I'm Paloma Moreno, Arts Commissioner.
Jennifer Hartjehalzum, City Council.
Jeff Wagner, you're Covington Mayor.
Patty Milton, Arts Commission.
Sean Smith, I'm on the council.
Beth Porter on the City Council.
Liz Hallberg on the Arts Council.
Joseph Lomo, City Council.
Christina is here. I thought I heard her say a call from her doctor, and she walked out. So anyway, she's on the council, and then I'm Regan Bulley, City Manager.
Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. We have, wow, a heavy agenda. I'm gonna turn it over to you, Patty.
Okay, well, I just want to let you know Riley did let us know she was on her way, so she'll just zip in here when she gets here. And if you could, our presentation will keep going.
The most colorful presentation.
Well, hopefully, it should be, hopefully.
I would say that the imagination that the Arts Commission brings is awesome.
Thank you.
It's fun. Yeah, it is fun. All right, so first slide, twenty twenty-three, a year in review. And does this change my? Okay, thank you. All right, so today we're going, you already have a list, but we're gonna meet the team. We're gonna do a recap of twenty twenty-three and what projects we currently have going on. A Creative Arts District update, big ideas update, upcoming projects, future idea bank, and then for the final topic, we're going to present the art that was selected for the rotating art at CCP. And this is Riley. All right. Okay, so first, we're gonna meet the team. I love this. Right, so first is myself, I'm the chairperson. I've been on the art mission since twenty eighteen. And then Riley is our vice chairperson. She's been on the commission since twenty twenty-one. And then Jessica Breeden is our secretary, and she's been around since twenty nineteen. And then here is our smorgasbord of new people, amazing new people, Paloma. You already met her. Andrea couldn't be here tonight, had a last minute meltdown at her house. Which we all have been there, we all understand. And Bo also got sick at the last minute, so she can't be here. And then we have Liz, our newest member, has only been here a couple months, and she's been amazing. Everyone's been amazing. So these, all these people started this year, and we have been so thankful to have them. They're amazing artists, and it's just been wonderful. All right, so our first topic. They're gonna turn it over to Jessica for the twenty twenty-three recap and current projects.
We've had a busy year of art making and art in general, so let's start with the vinyl wraps. So we finished up phase three of the vinyl wraps with the theme of inclusion and acceptance. We paired with the diversity and inclusion group for their input on that call, when we put it out, and we got very, very many, many people that put in their art, some of it didn't really apply to our call. But of the, of the many choices that we got, these are the four, and they're very colorful. Most of the community has really loved them. We've talked, talked to many people at Covington Days about that, because this is our touch point, right? So when people are like, well, what do you do? Well, this is something that a lot of people have seen in the community, so this is a great speaking point to what we're doing. Something that they can visually see all the time. The only, we only got one complaint. One complaint that the box didn't match the HOA estimate. But overall, we just brushed that off and said, well, it was taken by the art commission, and we love it, so.
And it's a community box.
It is. No one's owning any of these, right? So these are all city-owned, but it's outside of their HOA area, and so they just had some comments about.
And that sign next to it, I think, is the
The borderline of the HOA.
It's the second one. It's across the street from the school.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So I love, I just love these. They bring a smile to my face every time I see them. They're just happy. Happy little art pieces in the, in the community.
And for the most part, they're left alone.
We only had one vandalized that was up by Kentwood.
But it came off easily.
It did, because it's coated with some.
That's great. Let's do what it's supposed to.
Yep, yep. It works. So we had another one that was hit that was off of eighteen, that, that exit that we had to replace as well this year, but other than that, they've been untouched, which is great. Then in April, we attended the Makers Market. So in the past, we did a scavenger hunt, so we kind of jumped off of that. It was a great success to pair with the vendor booths. So what we did, we handed out the slip, had everyone go find what they could find at the vendor booths, and then come back, and then we traded their scavenger hunt checkoff list with an art supply, so that we can try to promote art any way we can.
That's really cool.
And they love it, because they just cannot believe that kids and adults could not believe, wait, free? Like, yeah, it's free. We want to promote art in the community. So it was enticing box for kids to come up and pick something out of. They just, it almost looked too good to be true for a lot of them, but it was well received. So we've got a lot of leftover art supplies that were going to be at the Makers Market here in a couple weeks and do something different, but with the same kind of supplies given away. So we have a lot of extras. It was burning hot that day.
That's right.
And so I, I think that kind of dampened the attendance, but we did have about a hundred, a little over a hundred people come by the booth, so still successful for anything that we can do to promote creating stuff in the community, is what we want. So we jumped off of not just creating paper-to-pen artwork, but what we did is we wanted to create musical instruments. And so I brought some of those that we created, that children created, and then we had those rhythm sticks too, just to kind of promote a different kind of art than.
So ours at my house, they're very popular.
We had two different kind of overall things that we were going to make. One of them was the rhythm stick, which have the bells. Well, so all one of the rhythm sticks, but these ones were gonna be like a tambourine bell. We thought that that would be a great thing for smaller children to do, and then older children could make a paper drum. Everyone wanted to make the paper drum.
Yeah.
Right? Everyone was drawn to this paper drum, and so we made a lot of paper drums for some of the smaller kids just decorate them, but it's kind of a fun
It is.
musical maker.
This might age me as one of the younger ones here, but am I the only one who sees reptile in the last one there?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Rugrats, if you don't remember.
Yes.
Also, extremely hot that weekend.
Oh, my gosh.
I, we almost melted on that.
Oh, yeah.
Sure you guys listened too. Yeah, it was really hot. I think it didn't deter people from coming out, though. People still, still came, so that was nice to see, too.
I don't know how I missed that.
Yeah.
I missed out.
Yeah, it was, it's always such a fun event, and it's so exciting to see people want to interact with our booth. Because we're not selling anything. We're just doing fun stuff, and so it's like kind of refreshing, you know? Yeah, so we love that event. And then following that same musical theme, we, at Kids Fest, did a booth where you could come in and do, make unexpected music with recycled items. So we had pots and pans, we had a bunch of spoons that you could bang on, whatever you saw there, and make music with stuff that you could find at home. Again, promote music-making, music as an art, and you don't have to have you know, a violin at home to make music. You can have a five-gallon Home Depot bucket.
Okay.
We've got a little video of the booth.
One more time. All right. I have to thank Bo for that. She
Cute.
Yeah, I'd love that.
So kind of taking the idea away from, you know, art isn't just pen and paper and paint. It's more than that, so.
Yeah. Right. I love that video. I watched it like five nights.
They are happy.
Okay, so I'm gonna address the Creative Arts District, give you guys an update of what's going on. And I first wanted to talk about where we really are in this process. And so the arts wall, they really have this set up well. And so to begin the process, you need to gather your information, and we've been working on this for five years. We're still in this, in this process right here, and we're moving along. We did get the readiness workbook done. We did the pre-application checklist, which is a checklist to make sure that you're ready to ask for help to apply. So it's, you're not applying, you're just making sure you're ready to apply. And then, when you're ready to apply, then you submit something that says, so first, we have, we think we have that pre-application ready, but there's a lot of other things here we have to get going to be done before we can even tell them we're interested. Once we tell them we're interested, then there's another form we have to fill out, and they come out and kind of ask us, well, what is your plan? What are you doing? And then, once they give us feedback on that process, then we're allowed to make whatever changes we need to do, talk about whatever we want to talk about, change whatever we want, and then we can send them a letter that says we're thinking about applying. So we're not even close to there, and so I just want to make that clear to everybody. We're still working down this path. I think this part of the process is probably the most labor-intensive. And right now, we're in, in this, in the section with the little yellow pluses at the end, where we're trying to go through and identify jobs in our area, or business in our area, and identify them with the creative industry. And the, the paperwork that we have done, we're still in the process of doing it, but there were over a thousand lines on my spreadsheet of jobs available, and so we're trying to match them up, and these, this is only going off of what business licenses have applied to the city. And so it's, it's kind of a hunt and pet, because if, if you're Joe Smith Consultation Company, well, what the heck is? Right. We have to like go online, and I Google the business, see if I can figure out what they are. Are they a construction company? Or are they, what, what are they? You know, do they, how do they fit in? And then there's occupations that are out there that are considered creative in the creative sector, so then we have to go through that. So it's, it's quite a lengthy, a lengthy process. I've spent a lot of time online just trying to get the spreadsheets ready so that we can match the, match the stuff up, so. We're there. And then there's a couple other things we haven't got to yet, but when we're ready to apply, that will be something that the city council will have to make that move, but we're, we're not, we're not there yet. So I just wanted to let you know, we're still working on it. It's been a long process, which we knew it was going to be. And so as we just plug along, we'll just keep going and keep you updated on where we're at, and when we get ready, when we think we're ready to, to take the next step, it'll have to go through the city council first, so, just so you know, we're not just like applying for stuff.
What's been really cool about this process, see businesses in our city that are creatively designated, and it's quite surprising and awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Because even something that you wouldn't think would be a creative.
It's a substantial amount, for sure.
Yeah.
It's a big amount of jobs that fit into that category that have that leeway of being artistic. It's a big amount. It's, it's nice.
Big umbrella.
Yes.
So Patty, question on, when they say, or they're asking, identify the creative sector jobs within your district? Is that the city?
Yeah.
The city, okay.
Yes.
What are some creative jobs that you may not usually? Like, you would think a hair salon, hair salon, because they're nail salon.
Culinary.
Yeah, culinary restaurants.
Fitness.
Yeah.
Yes. What, the frog, the little frog?
Anything that you have to use your, your own imagination to do. Software developer.
Yes, yes. Right, graphic design, and yeah.
To make that, that research work easier, for an example, like maybe if the city, like assuming the plan for business license in the city, is there a way to be on the intake, we can just find out right quick and put it in the spreadsheet that you guys?
That would be amazing, but right now, we're working, you know, we don't have that yet, but that would be ideal to just say what the business is, if, you know, is, if, if it's Joe Smith Consultation, is it a construction company? Is it, you know, that would help a lot, we kind of narrow it down.
Right.
That wasn't done, you know, wasn't, there was no need for it at the time, so we're just trying to figure it out. And that's not even, this is only with people that have applied for business license. That's not even the, the crafty crafters out there in the vendors. Side hustles. So.
So if there are photographs, and that maybe have not considered, or maybe their end being is to have a little business, but they really want to step up. Why?
Right.
With that, that I mean, they have to do a certain amount of things. You know, business is not really making money out of it.
Right, and you don't have to have a business license unless you make like six hundred dollars a year, you know. I know people that craft to just make crafts, that like just make crafts because they need to make stuff, so it just depends. I mean, we had, we had a discussion about the business license issue, but really, we're not in the business license business. We're into finding out who's making stuff and doing stuff, and so after we get nailed down the business license, then we're gonna reach out to the whole community and see if we can't just get people to you know, say, you know, yeah, I make jewelry for, on Etsy or whatever, just to get their, their numbers counted, so.
At some point, I envision us asking that of the community at some point.
Yeah, I think so.
Plastic surgeons.
Oh, yeah. You know what? That might, I haven't run across that medical yet, but I'm not through everything, I don't think, in the, in the occupation part, so. No, yeah. Could be good. Anyway, yeah, so that's where we're at on that. And the next slide I have is just some of the, I just pulled this one up. This was setting the groundwork. This is like the first thing that we needed to do, and Marita, I don't know if you remember, Marita. She really worked on this, and so we got they're looking for, it's not rocket science, they're just saying, what, what do you see? You know, and so we have this part done, but this associated with that other part really gets us down the, down the path. It's it's a slow process, but we're getting there. Does anybody have any other questions about the Creative Arts District? Does everybody understand how this process is a step-by-step-by-step process? Okay, all right. Okay, so the big idea update. I think we talked about the big idea last year, didn't we?
I was in here last year.
Okay.
I think it was on the board.
Right, and so as we worked through our big ideas, a couple of them bubbled to the top, and Riley's gonna tell us about those.
So first one I'm gonna talk about is actually one of my big ideas. And I'm sure some of you know, in Seattle, they've done this, where they, they've painted crosswalks. I think they have actually twenty different ones. You can go and see in, in the city of Seattle with different themes associated with them. So my idea was to bring that to Covington, because like the the electrical boxes, there's something that is gonna have a big impact on the community for a low dollar. So we've done some research on, on the cost of it and everything, and it seems to be depending on size, between like two and four thousand dollars to have it installed, and then last for like up to five, ten years, and when it's on like a road like that, the amount of like visual traffic, I guess, inside is really high, so you could say a lot with relatively low amount of money when you talk about art. So that's one that we're excited about, and right now, we're just trying to find a good spot for it and be associated.
Sorry, did it go too fast? Okay.
I liked the books for by the library.
Yeah.
I did too. I like that.
Aren't there, there, there su, are there certain restrictions about which kind of roads you can do it on?
Yeah, so we want to do one that's maintained by the city and not a road that's maintained by the state. So that's one big factor, and then also you have to be, it has to be somewhere where there's some sort of like traffic stopping for pedestrians. Sometimes there's crosswalks that don't have like lights or signs as much. Depends, I know that sounds weird, but like, depending on the crosswalk, for safety reasons, you want to have like a stop under the cars.
There, I'm gonna go back. There's also the fact that they say that there's a fifty percent drop in accidents on those streets, so, yeah. Was there accident there?
No.
Oh, okay, all right.
Just keep the concern.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Yes, they would.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
They, they were a little bit opposed to it because of additional costs and, and wash dot would be difficult on some of our streets, but on city-owned ones that are signaled, we could do it.
Yeah.
I love the idea. I think it's a great idea. Public Court wasn't super happy about it, but we could nudge him, I could nudge him.
That would be great. And another thing is if us as a commissioner funding it, that takes the unused cost.
Yes.
We were gonna spend the money on social support, so that's one of the big artists.
But I think, I think it's not necessarily cost as much as the time.
Maintenance.
Yeah. The more cars that go over, we had to replace our sidewalks in Kingsley, because all the paint disappeared. Because of the heavy traffic. Yeah, it, it won't last five years, whi, which is fine, but these are also really cool community projects, like the mural that the skate park was, where you put a number and you go paint your number. Like, those are cool opportunities for that as well, yeah.
Yeah, well, we could also specifically choose the level lower traffic area, something like safety too, people are gonna wanna so might be smart for the longevity of it, it's not 10K. Yeah. 10K is maintained by the state.
Yeah.
Right.
Anyway. And then our other big idea is a labyrinth. And this is actually Jessica's idea, which we all fell in love with quickly after she explained it. But this is something that, there's a lot of them here at the United States, there's actually like a whole following come and like visit labyrinths, and they'll literally fly out to check them off their bucket list. So maybe think of it as a way to attract more tourism in our city, which I don't think is super prevalent yet. So yeah, and then it also it has that mental health aspect associated with this, not only is it a piece of art, but it also could help with mental health. There's a lot of different versions, and there's more expensive ones, cheaper ones. This is gonna be a long-term project that we have to save up for, because they, they can be very costly, but we see that benefit, so we're gonna be saving.
Even the more rustic version in the upper right, I mean, we were just talking about all the Covington potatoes we have.
Yeah.
Potatoes.
Rocks.
Rocks. Oh. I know all about those.
I was out of needing somebody to call them Covington potatoes, and it stuck.
Oh, I have been to one in Maui, actually, and it is a very peaceful, meditative environment. I agree, yeah, this is such a fun. They can be as big or as small as you like, too, I mean. That's
We were talking about placing, maybe in like Jamie Creek Park. There's not a chance of going wrong in that personal vicinity, but this would keep it like calm, but also bring
There's also a labyrinth, a national labyrinth directory that we could get on.
Be part of, be part of, so. There's a niche for everything.
Oh, yeah, you could totally get karma involved in this situation.
Enthusiast, yes, I like it.
Between ten, I think twenty thousand, between ten and twenty. Yeah, I don't, Jessica, how much were they?
Yeah, probably ten and twenty, depending on the medium that you wanted to use. You have to sometimes get a landscape architect involved. Right.
We can spend more money, no problem.
It's gonna also be turned into a community project. Yeah. With community participation.
Yeah, like that one up in the right corner, we could build that.
Yeah, I would just be concerned about people picking that up.
Right.
As soon as she said Jamie Creek Park, I was like, oh.
Yeah, it's like kicking rocks over, something like that. But the one, I think, in the upper left was where I'm looking for, where it's more like a mural on the, on the ground.
Tile and line.
That one was the one that was running up.
Okay. Yep. Yeah, the one on the lower right is on Bainbridge Island. Oh, there. And it's up top of a big hill.
Looks like it would be the most expensive.
Yeah.
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 Thirty.
Higher numbers.
I didn't want to exclude that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Those are two big ideas that were.
At our next retreat, we'll have another round.
Right. Got a vision, right?
You can do that in a labyrinth. Yeah. Oh, labyrinth retreat.
That's a peaceful, you know.
All right.
All right. We've shown what we've done in this past, you know, couple of time. Now, we will show you what hopefully we will be able to do. So Utility Wraps had an incredibly positive reaction in the community. I work at the La Pati down the street, and children are very honest. Children are very, very honest, and the feedback from children and their parents specifically was great. They loved it. The boxes, they said that it added pops of color, especially for now, these times. Where's, no color, we don't have, we don't have any color. Whether we like it or not, these, these boxes really do add a sense of diversity and community to our I feel like it's a pretty diverse community. Covington has grown and expanding very rapidly, and it's definitely getting to a point where we need to make it look as beautiful as we can, and beautiful cities create beautiful peoples, and we will continue to review possible locations to bring new wraps. be- beautiful cities create beautiful peoples and we will continue to review possible locations to bring new wraps and work together to come up with a theme that we feel will encompass Covington and the general vibrancy that we want the city to have. We will present these themes to you guys for you guys to address and confirm, pick, which we then put out a call for artists to submit their ideas because the point really is for the community to showcase their artwork. If we were to show our artwork, that's fine, but having members of the community of all ages, we don't, we don't know who submit these artworks. It could be anyone walking down the street, seeing their artwork and that's a really cool, that's a really fascinating feeling to have as a person and for the city that you live in to provide that brings, brings a, a general positive feeling to people around, which just creates a better environment for all of us. Um, we would put these together and then execute them on the utility boxes that we can and we find good locations outside of HOAs, so we don't have any problems. But yeah, that's just kind of the update with phase four on the next related wraps. With the rotating art, we had a lot of success with phase one in the Covington Community Park. You guys will be able to see the artwork at the end of the presentation, but we had many positive feedbacks. Some, like Jessica said, some artworks fit into the category, some don't. But it's so nice to see how people interpret the category and what they think could fit into what we're asking for. So with the rotating art, we're possibly looking at opening another opportunity in Jenkins Creek. Because where we did it in, in Covington Community Park, so we might as well do it in as many parks as we can. Because then that shows that we're taking care of all areas of the city and not just enforcing our areas into one specific location. And we're thinking of everyone in all corners of Covington. Um, people were really happy with knowing that there's going to be art in the park soon. Knowing that there's going to be more elements and the opinions of people saying, yes, I totally support more art in the community. I would be happy to, it, just the general feedback has been really awesome, has been really great, has been really prominent. Um, and it's really interesting to hear people's real opinions about the work that you're doing. Cause it matters, it matters what the people think because they're gonna be the ones living in it, we live in it, we have to see this art every day. And we should have it reflect our general community in our general sense. So, yeah, that's just kind of the update that we have for these two specific items.
I'm sorry, I went too fast, you have a question?
I do, the, so CCP had plants installed as part of the cons- design and eventual construction. I don't think that Jenkins Creek has a place to mount the art. So is that, when you're talking about Jenkins Creek, are you considering the additional cost of that? I think it is.
May- maybe I can speak to that. It, we do have one plant that's part of the design for the next phase of Jenkins Creek Park, so it'll be all set up for a new piece of rotating art.
Awesome, wonderful, thank you.
Do we have an account of how many remaining city-owned utility boxes we have with the capability of this?
Do, yeah, we definitely do, yeah, we're looking and we're hoping out the area and we, we have a, a sizable amount to be able to do a whole new wave of projects, so I almost forgot, I, yeah, moving, moving right along. Um, a mural is something that the community really wants. That's what I hear a lot, mural, 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 art is awesome, but we need a mural. I agree, I agree, as a, as a person who hears opinions from people young and old, a mural is something that definitely brings a community together. It enhances aesthetic and vibrancy, it brings cultural expression and identity and it just revitalizes a city to a whole new measures. We have a research program that we are really looking into and hopefully have a mural plan to be installed by twenty twenty-five. That is the plan, that is, it is a very high interest item from all of us on the commission and from the community as of what I've heard. So we're really pushing forward to make this mural happen, to actually have a mural implanted, ready to go and, and bring on everything, all the benefits that a mural has to a community, to a space. Yeah, yeah, that was one of the things. Yeah, alright.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
Alright. Do you wanna talk to this one? Andrea was gonna cover this and so we're just kind of hunting.
What we have thought and what we really want to emphasize is for Covington to have a brand as every evolving, growing city should. Every city should have a brand that is recognizable, that makes them stand out. In Norfolk, Virginia, many, I don't know if you guys have been in Seattle and have seen the Pike Place Pigs, Little Piggies, yeah, yeah, classic Seattle. Seattle Pigs on the Parade are a classic Seattle feature, the Norfolk, Virginia Mermaids are a classic feature. These are things that are branded, these are things that will seep in people's brains and you will remember them and they're, they, uh, as more out of the odd than as it can be, as the Chicago cows, you will remember that there are cows in Chicago. You will remember and that will make you wanna go back to see the cows in Chicago. So for our brand, of course, of course, Mr. Karma. Chameleons are a symbol of adaptability and change and Covington is definitely adapting and changing as every growing city right now possibly can and a chameleon would just be the perfect, it's, it's, it's already encompassed in our symbol, but making it our brand. I personally can't think of any other city that has a chameleon as a brand or that could have come up with a chameleon. That's very pers- that's very personified and very memorable and it would make Covington very memorable out of all cities because it's a, it, it's a chameleon, it's a, it's very effective, it's very effective and the Karma Collective will be very effective. That's, yeah, let's just, yeah, so, yeah.
I was mentioning earlier, we should have the, the Covington potatoes around as well.
But you see, when you think. It connects you, it connects you and it's memorable and these small little things make cities memorable and people talk about them and wanna visit and that'll increase tourism, which like Riley said, you know, we could definitely revive, we could definitely work on revitalize because, because whether we like it or not, a society does not prevail without younger generations moving forward and wanting to do stuff. And if younger generations don't flock toward city, it just kind of stays stunk. And Karma Collective will definitely, in my, in our opinion, it'll be very effective. And it's, it's, it's cute, look at it, it's, look, it's karma, look, look at him, very cute.
In the upper, so we just pulled images of ideas, you know, that the idea would be to have like other cities have done, um, a fiberglass, a blank fiberglass chameleon made and then people would either purchase it. In other cities, they purchase them equipment in front of their businesses, they decorate them the way they want, PTAs would do it. I could see Costco doing it and making it red and white, you know, just businesses, whatever wanted to do it. And then the upper right can corner there, that's a giant balloon and I don't know if you've seen those at other cities, especially around Halloween time where they have on the top of buildings, these crazy. So, um, and it lights up at night, so that would be something that like, where's karma? He could look around.
Yeah.
Um, I don't really know that, I like the idea and I know other cities do it, so I know it can be done, but getting something on the top of a building is.
So this is the right group to talk to about that because, so I, I presented an idea to CEDIS. Musketein, uh, Iowa, I think there's the Musketeen River that goes down there. And they created something really similar, I don't know if some of you remember, they've been on the council for a while. The, the ri- there's this, um, story of a river monster and so someone created these tentacles that are, that are balloon tentacles, I, I showed it to you. And they put them like outside of windows in, in buildings, you know, all around town. And so I thought the exact same thing a couple of years ago and I go to our community and I'm like, well, our sign code won't allow that. One of, our sign code won't allow a chameleon on top of city hall, right? So the, so anyway, this city council is the right group to talk to. About doing something like that because, I guess I think there's just some really cool opportunities with this, I also wanted to bring up, CEDIS has had, so the Covington Economic Development Council, CEDIS has had these exact conversations about branding and what's our X factor. And I think it'd be really valuable, a- all the things you just went through, we've discussed in CEDIS as well. So I think if we can.
Yeah, that's, I mean, the Karma Collective will be effective.
Listen, I just.
On, like, like.
It doesn't have to be that name, I just. Anyway, so it could be bright, it, however anybody wants to decorate it, it's up to them if they purchase the, the thing. So I mean, there's a lot more ground, legwork that has to be done, but it's a starting point.
Yeah.
Alright, so rotating art at CCP Bowl was the one to present this, so sending.
I got it.
You got it, okay, here we go, selection number one.
First, so these were the selections that we made for the rotating art platforms at the CCP. This, this is, uh, called Crow, it's by an artist named Jerry Newcomb. It's black powder coated aluminum.
Did I get the names wrong?
It looks like it could be sharp, but I don't believe that it is. I think that's, that was kind of the appeal to us is that it kind of looks and, and ambiguous until you get into the right angles and then you realize, oh, it is a crow. It kind of reminded us of the crow eating the french fries in Auburn, but abstract. So the head is the beef portion that's touching the foot in the front.
It's like, it's a crowing down around the left inside.
Yeah, that's cool.
So this one is about three and a half feet tall. Three and a half feet tall?
Yeah, it's pretty big.
That's bigger than I expected. It is there, then, then it looks as well though. So that was the first one that we chose and then the second option. Um, oh, I got my artist mixed up, so the other one was Jerry Newcomb. This one is Jerry Newcomb, other one is Matt Babcock. So this one is called Blue Spire, it stands about eight feet tall. So we really liked the juxtaposition of Metamorphosis in the middle, which is rather tall and then having, uh, you know, on either side of it, just different sizes of sculpture. To kind of create a balance in that turnaround area at CCP. So this one is glass and steel. And it represents water going into the atmosphere and we really just love the colors. I thought the colors were very, uh, Covington colors. The rainbow part of it is a different material than, there's, so there's two different sides that you're looking at. There's like a rainbow kind of iridescent on one side and then on this side is full ball blue. And it also has a bit of movement, so both of them have movement within, but they don't actually move. Just because of the placement around that, uh, roundabout in, in CCP, we wanted to make sure that it didn't entice people to climb on it or go into that area, kind of, you know, for dropping off, it's not where we want people to hang out, so. There was a couple of great options, but they were more interactive and we wanted to avoid that in that area, just. Yeah.
So, uh, I said this when we had, when Metamorphosis was brought to us. What are we gonna do when kids are climbing on it? And I was told, no, no one's gonna climb on it. I have seen more people climb on it than. A metamorphosis, that's made of glass. What are we gonna do when a kid decides to try to climb on it and the glass breaks? This is, these are my concerns as.
Yeah.
What I have to think about.
Yeah.
And what is, what happens if the glass breaks? What are we gonna do for that? How is the replacement process gonna work on that one, uh, since all that?
That's a good question, but I think that the glass is, is actually adhered to the steel, so we need to ask that question for sure. But I'm thinking it's not, it's not like you could throw a rock through it.
All we need is that one kid to, to shatter and walk across it, um, so.
Or, or perhaps it's shatter proof.
Yeah.
And then the thickness would be important too.
I, I can just add as part of staff setting up the agreement with the artists that we'll be having conversations with them to understand the materials and making sure it's robust enough for a park setting and whatnot, which I think is what we did with the Metamorphosis when that became a concern and uh, we worked through those and obviously kids do play on it all the time and it's a non-issue. So if we do, if we do identify that, oh, there's a safety risk, there's glass that's gonna break or something, then that would be something that we'd bring back to the Arts Commission and Council to maybe reconsider if that's a good option or not.
And then just one more question because stuff I like to know is what were the options you did not select or is that coming up in a slide that? We're not.
A different selection, two different selections. One of them did not work, beautiful, but it didn't work in the space that we had and the other one had already been, uh, promised to different city. So that's what we found is that a lot of the artists were applying to multiple cities.
Is that just a close up of that or is that the other side?
It is the other side.
It's the other side, so it's a little less colorful on the one side, right?
Right, one of the, one side is like that iridescent. It kind of looks like a tentacle. Very different.
Yeah, feel.
Pieces that you chose, uh, it, especially that crow, people are gonna be looking at it, trying to figure it out.
Yeah, it bring, again, it brings attention and it's memorable and you'd be like that, that crow.
You either love it or you hate it.
Yes.
Right, you either love it or you hate it and it invokes a very strong emotion.
Oh, yes.
It is probably funny, so.
Very true.
Yes.
Right, very true.
Yeah, of course.
But it does evoke strong emotion, right?
The way this, um, rotating art is gonna work, since we're putting in two pieces at one time, i- it's the whole process of finding the art, installing the art is lengthy. So when we go, we're going to be renting this from these artists for three years, but because these are two at one time, then one is gonna be three years, correct me if I'm wrong, John.
Three years.
And then the other one is gonna be four, just to get them off schedule, so that we're not laying out a ton of money, cause it, it is, you know. Yeah, at the same time, so then they'll be, yeah, it'll be staggered a little bit, so.
I think there was an earlier, um, discussion in the, in the Pat Patterson era of, of this.
I'm pretty sure.
Where it was looked at that we may be rotating art on the platforms out of, out of, out of synchronicity. Uh, but it was reevaluated and decided that it would be odd to have art on one platform and then a blank platform in between.
I don't think it was.
So I. Yeah, so I think we decided to reevaluate that situation and have them concurrent on the same timeline and then swap them out at the same time.
Yeah, it wouldn't be blank, it would just be replaced.
Replaced with something else, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they would, they, I think they were proposing putting them both in at the same time, but then having one term three years, one term four years. So the next cycle there then off.
But that, they, you guys vetoed that?
Well, I would, I don't know that I've necessarily discussed it recently, I think we've discussed it generally, there's different ways of doing it. Um, but it's almost twice the work for staff anyway to have it staggered every year cause now we're doing it once every year, where if we can actually put them together, then we're only doing it once every three years.
That makes sense.
Exactly, and, and it's no more, I mean, installation, delivery, all those kind of things, it doesn't, it's gonna be per artist, so.
That makes sense.
But I, I would say honestly, we could do it.
My only concern was with our, with our budget, so we just didn't wanna be, be all consumed one year with all that. You know, spr- to spread it out a little bit, we could talk about it later.
Sure.
I think there's benefit.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're at a point right now, nothing's installed, so everything's open, yeah.
Just excited that it's happening.
Cool.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, it's just been, yes. The, the pads have been poured for a while, so this has kind of been in the upper. So we're just excited to like get something going.
Just, just a quick. Just, just a quick follow up on this, what's our backup plan if say, one of the artists can't deliver?
Yeah, so we likely would put out a new call, I'm guessing if one, if one or either of these. Or both of these fall were to fall through at some point, then we would just, we, we discussed putting out a, a call once we lost the last one that we chose. Um, as opposed to reevaluating the ones that were already turned in that we had. We felt like we had good options, so we didn't put another call out, but that, we could do that.
And I will say there are a substantial amount of artists who fill that call.
Okay.
People want to get their artwork shown and presented and out, they really do. They respond and we have more than enough material to come up with if, if case needed be. You know, Matt or Jerry couldn't come through, right, yeah. Covington, Covington addresses, Covington.
Oh, no, I don't think, are they Covington? No.
Well, these, these are, these are Seattle, so these are a little bit more expanded, but a lot of Covington people did respond, so if we wanted to keep it local, we could, but. But I know Matt Babek is from Seattle for sure, I know, cause I, I still have his, his official.
I think the original call went out to like the Pacific Northwest or.
But we could make it local, we could do it.
And when will this happen? When will this happen? How far, oh, it's kind of out of our hands right now.
Right.
How's it going?
We're still in the contract.
So, so I think the next step, if, unless we get redirection from council at some point, is we're just gonna bring it um. The City Council on Consent Agenda on October tenth, just to approve the selection. And then the contract amount is actually within staff signing authority, so assuming that that happens on October tenth. Staff will just move forward with executing the contracts with the artists and we hope by end of the year to have them installed, but it'll be somewhat subject to. Uh, timeline, timeline of artists and whatnot.
Will you do unveiling like you did with Metamorphosis and Seahorse?
Um, I have not part, been part of any of those discussions, I don't know if the art commission has discussed that or not.
It actually came out of a giant like Christmas package.
Really? So I'm hearing it, so.
It's pretty exciting.
Any, any art, any new element to a city gets people talking, it gets conversation, it gets excitement and, and people want to see it and be part of it. And unveiling brings people and I don't, I'm not saying we could, you do a Christmas thing, but I mean.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Fireworks, why not?
Uh, a couple of comments, I really appreciate the presentation and the, and the thinking. It looks like we're, we're starting to really coalesce around some ideas and getting that Covington feel for our, artists commission, so that's great. Uh, I like the crosswalks idea, another, um, that I actually talked to, um. Uh, the pow, uh, excuse me, the water company about painting fire hydrants too, uh, and they're, they're not opposed to it. So, um, I think there's some things you have to do, but they said, you know, that's something we could assist with. So, um, I think that would be another kind of way to bring some.
Water district?
Yeah, well, they, was the water district was servicing it and checking the flow, but, um, I think the fire.
They also maintain the paint.
Ask, ask the water district employee over there.
We talked about it a lot, we love that idea.
Couple other things, you mentioned the utility boxes, that's great, uh, and I think Beth or you mentioned about the non-city. I mean, there's one in Timberlane that just gets tagged all the time and I'd love to see it, yeah, wrapped. So if there is an opportunity to do that, I mean, I would give money to get that box, so, so I'll.
I'll start a GoFundMe right now.
And then let me just, yeah, just two more things and then I'll, I'll be quiet. As to people fiddling with the art at CCP, you know, even a small temporary fence. Has a, has a strong deterrent, I mean, it, it, it just reminds people, hey, I'm not really supposed to be up here. I mean, obviously someone's going to wanna damage it, they'll step over that, but there's little things you can't do. And then finally, it is my dream that we will have some type of huge art show that brands Covington. And it just so happens I found in the paper in Cody, Wyoming, which I don't think is much bigger than Covington. Has been doing an art show and auction and I think this is their forty second year. Um, he raised a million bucks, so for their art and Cody's kind of in the middle of nowhere. So, something to shoot for, um, I'm just, I would love to see some type of. And it's all western art, that makes sense for Cody.
Yeah.
Um, but some type of branded themed art show for Covington that we can start doing year after year and get people. And when we have our new rec center, we even do, you know, the presentation or, you know, auctions down there, so. Just, I'm just gonna keep putting that out there that I'd love to see an art show, an auction that, you know, gets us. A new clientele in Covington, but also can, can start generating funds for our art.
That's something we had summed in discussion around, is like doing something similar to, um, you know, the, the makers markets and stuff like that. But like a Covington version, arts version of it, our own production, but we haven't thought super. To what that event would look like, but this definitely a million bucks.
Yeah.
That's a million dollar idea.
Now go do it.
So, um, thank you very much, these are great ideas, great.
Yeah.
I love it. And so, um, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to hear all of the ideas, all the work that's been done and now I know where my girls got.
You wanna take it home and brag?
Ice cream, they must've been there making.
Oh, okay.
So, and no, they're perfect, so thank you all, uh, appreciate you and thanks for all the good work that you do, so thank you.